Very good. Something alarm going off? Or the alarm, or the garage door open? Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. This is a regular time and place for a meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. We continue to deal with the health emergency, so we are using the WebEx teleconferencing format for today's meeting, so whether you're joining us by way of web or by the teleconferencing, we thank you for joining us virtually. For those interested in making comments during unscheduled appearances, please use the raise your hand feature if you're online, and hopefully you've made contact with the clerk if you are on the telephone. Members of the audience who have filled out a speaker's card will be taken in the order they were received by the clerk, and thank you for participating in the unscheduled appearances part. Each vote today will be a verbal or voice vote, so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted after we introduce the item, have a discussion. There'll be a motion and a second regarding the item, and then the roll call will be taken by district. With that, those housekeeping items out of the way, I'm going to ask now the clerk to please card roll to establish form.
Chairman.
Here.
Richard Dolly. Doug Burman.
Here.
Ice Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fernandez.
Here. Lieutenant of Control, five members present. We have established forum. We will be able to conduct business, so thank you, everyone. Next up, the invocation delivered by Pastor Arthur Fox of New Hope Orthodox Presbyterian Church, and then please remain standing for the Blessed Believers. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Hill, Ms. Freeman, Ms. Pedersen, Mr. Verboon, Mr. Valley, Mr. Fegundus, Mr. Neves, Mr. Sekian, Ms. Badashi, Ms. Ventrella, and Ms. Martinez. I wanted to especially encourage you this morning from Judges Chapter 10, 1 through 5. Now, this is not one of the passages you memorized, but I just read it this morning. I'm preparing a Bible study on it, so if you'll be patient for a few moments. "After Benelac, there arose to save Israel Tolo, the son of Kuah, son of Dodo, a man of Issachar. He lived at Shamir in the hill country of Ephraim, and he judged Israel 23 years. Then he died and was buried at Shamir. After him arose Jair, the Gileadite, who judged Israel 22 years, and he had 30 sons who rode on 30 donkeys, and they had 30 cities called Habut Jair, whose houses are Jair, or cities of Jair, to the state, which are in the land of Gilead. And Jair died and was buried in Canaan." These are not entities. I don't know a single kid or adult who's memorized those names. What they are is, I suggest to you, is an example of those who just showed up and did their jobs. Jair, he was a judge. That's all it said. And that meant teaching Israel how to live. And they also delivered Israel from the enemies that they were facing. And Jair did the same thing, and he just mentioned he has 30 sons. That's all we hear about them in the Bible. But I put it to you that they were notable for their faithfulness. They did the jobs God put them in the position to do, and they did them as well as they could. And the Holy Spirit inspired men to remember them in Scripture. I don't know how many thanks you get for what you do, but I thank you. I hope others will join me in thanking you. But I wanted to encourage you that if you're showing up and doing your jobs, if no one else notices, God does. Let's pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you for the men and women you've put in place to serve this community and the county of Kings. We thank you, the Lord, that in a day when men are notorious for seeking higher office and leveraging their lower offices to become famous and important, these men are content to serve you faithfully where they are. And I pray you'd bless the work they do today and guide them, and guide us all through these days, and help us, most of all, to seek you, to seek your blessing on what we do. Guide their deliberations and help, then we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Paul. Now, if you please join me as we honor America by reciting the Blessed Believers. Ready, begin.
Blessed Believers to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item up on this morning's agenda is employee recognition. Ed Herland, would you like to kick off the presentation?
Good morning, Chairman, Director, and Director of Services and Services Directive. I'm here today for a county service award presentation. There's 15-time service award program in place since 1977 to recommend full-time employment service to employees. Service awards are presented to employees after the appointment of five years of continuous full-time service and an increment of five years thereafter. At the end of each fiscal year, Human Resources identifies those employees who become eligible and receive service awards during the previous fiscal year. Each eligible recipient receives their certificate and the number of years of service that have been completed. Each awarded 10 years and over is also permitted to select an award which they are entitled based on the years of service completed. Awards are provided in the form of either cash or memento based on the years of qualifying service. Employees who selected their memento will be notified by Human Resources when it is ready for pickup at Human Resources office. Employees who selected cash will have the amount distributed on their November 4th paycheck. Today, employees from Human Services Agency is here to be recognized. Therefore, we recommend that you acknowledge employees that have completed various milestones of qualifying service. I will read everyone's name on the list who is expected to receive an award, whether they're here or not. Awards, when your name is read, please come forward so that you can have a picture with the chairman. We'd also appreciate it if you would stay in the bullpen after your name is read so that we can get a group picture of everyone from Human Services who receives an award today. All right, so again, we'll start with our five-year-olds. All right, so first up, we have Heather Alsberry. Katrina Amaral.
No perfect contender.
Marian Alvalos Claus.
Be careful coming down. We have wires all over, and we have everything, so we'll play in public work. Congratulations. They had a little bit too much glare. They're tied over now.
Raul Chavez.
Watch the wires. Congratulations. Thank you.
Next up, Eric O'Davila.
Congratulations.
Next, we have Christine Denham. Brooke Donaldson. Juanzupay Garcia. Jessica Hunter.
Watch the cones. Watch the, yeah, there's plenty of trip hazards around here, so, yeah. Congratulations. Good job.
Araya Avara.
Congratulations. You only got 40 more years.
Next, we have Veronica Kilner Avalon. Sylvia Martinez. Suzie Nova. Travis Reese. Clarissa Rinker.
Did you invite all these people? Oh, they're working, huh?
Liliana Robles. Corina Rodriguez. Christina Rodriguez.
Sorry.
Ah, the green lights.
Maria Rodriguez Lopez. Christine Salinas. Jamie Shockley. Daisy Simpson. Vanessa Stewart. Aunt Patricia Teniente. So if you guys can remain seated, we have the next group, which is the 10 years. We have Emma Campos. Rosa Espinoza. Veronica Mejia.
Congratulations. 10 years. You only have 30 more years to go.
Atanya Moore. Cascas.
And Torey Walcott. All right, so next up, we have 15 years, Valerie Amaya. Heather Burns.
Wonderful milestone. Yeah, you had to take that guaranteed to be a family heirloom.
Melissa Chavez. Povida Cruz. Alfredo Jimenez.
Yeah, well, watch the wires. Nice beard. I like the color. I know.
Nicole Gemai. Elsa Perez.
Congratulations. We should move like the camera.
Monica Regoza. Catherine Siegel. Veronica Sukoo. And Sylvia Vargas. Next up, we have our 20 years, so I'll invite Wendy to come on up. Our first 20-year recipient is Robert Carmona.
Congratulations. Good morning. It's really nice to see all of my staff here getting honored, but Robert's 20 years of service is something we wanted to take a few extra moments on. So he began his career with the county November 2001 as a social service worker. In March 2007, he was promoted to a social service supervisor, and he's worked in that position for the past 15 years. Most of his career's been in child welfare. He served many years in emergency response overseeing the investigations of child abuse and neglect referrals. He's also taken on lead role in numerous projects and initiatives. He's currently assigned to our program in policy development as a supervisor. He's promoted positive change with our customers, with our staff, and with our families within Kings County. He's dependable. He's a team player. He's willing to lend a hand whenever asked. Robert consistently considers the needs and feelings of others. He's a hard-working family man. He's a talented artist that we take advantage of every once in a while. He enjoys hiking, exploring new places with his wife and kids when he's not at work. And I asked one of the deputies that works closely with Robert to share her experience of working with him, and she indicated, "What stands out to me about Robert is his empathy and great sense of humor. In a profession where secondary trauma is experienced daily, Robert is one that is able to lift you up during difficult times. Robert is known to some staff for his artistic abilities. The beautiful colors he uses on canvas represents his positive approach in the work we do. Robert has and will always be a key player in our leadership team." Thank you, Robert.
21, that's it.
We're going to take advantage, everyone.
Our next 20 years is Sergio Rubio.
Congratulations. 20 years. Started in high school?
I feel like you and Sergio, Sergio and Robert, were in the same class. Sergio also started November 2001 as an eligibility worker. On July 4th, he promoted to an employment and training worker, and in September 2011, he promoted to an employment and training supervisor. In October 2014, he promoted again to program specialist, where he has been in that position for the past eight years. He's a hard-working team player who can always be depended on. He's positive and has a professional demeanor. He has an unending limit list of projects and county letters that he's constantly reviewing and analyzing and getting information out to staff. We get consistent positive feedback from his peers. He gets complimented on his relationships and partnership with the programs that he served. He's been instrumental in the implementation of our home visitation program. He's a dedicated father, committed to his family. He loves to fish. And I guess you're currently trying to rebuild the boat when we don't have you hopping at work.
There's been enough there. I'm trying to sell it.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
Got to find a place that has water first.
His deputy director that he works closely with said he truly loves working with Sergio. Sergio embodies the definition of a real gentleman. He's a man whose conduct proceeds from goodwill and acute sense of propriety and whose self-control is equal to all, even in emergencies. He considers the rights and feelings of others rather than his own, and I'm sorry, Assam said this, not me. And despite being a devoted cowboy fan, has an optimistic attitude in life and a well-balanced sense of humor, which will help him get through this football season.
I'm not surprised that's coming from the 49 years.
Consider the source.
Thank you for your service, Sergio.
Next up, we have our 35 years. We have Susan Claudia Fisher Padilla.
I thought you were going to hold her to the five years. Yeah, 35 years is quite an accomplishment. Susan began her career at Human Services April 6, 1987, as an account clerk. In October 1994, she promoted to an eligibility worker and was later promoted to an eligibility worker, too, the following year. She's been in that position for 25 years, serving the residents and community of Kings County. She's organized. Sounds like you consistently meet your deadlines. That was highlighted in here. And, but that you're approachable, and you have coached and mentored so many eligibility workers over the years. You're helpful. You pitch in when people might be falling behind, but you're also resourceful and have vast knowledge of our programs and are heavily relied upon and dependable. You work to help your team accomplish their objectives, and you also are described as very family-oriented, enjoy spending quality time with your loved ones, and you're very hands-on, involved in all of their activities. Your supervisor indicated that your 35 years working in Human Services is no accident. It is your hard work, your perseverance, your learning, your studying, your sacrifice, and most of all, love of what you are doing and learning to do. The way you take on challenges and complete each task that are given to you with such curiosity and resolve is truly inspiring. She is consistently impressed with your attitude towards the job and is thankful and lucky to have someone as hardworking as you in her unit. Congratulations.
60 days before Christmas.
That concludes our Human Services Agency awardees, so we're going to go ahead and get a group photo of everyone together. Can we move it?
Just put it back. Yeah, just put it back. Can you get everybody in the wide angle a little bit?
I'll try. I think so. It's going to be a small picture. Ready? I'm going to take a couple. One more. Everyone looking? Thank you. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Watch your step. Watch the wires. Watch all the trip hazards. All right. Thank you, everyone. Moving on with the agenda, the next item on the agenda is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this board. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. Does a clerk have a record of anyone under unscheduled?
The first speaker card I have is Rosa Sierra.
Good morning, and thank you for being here.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Rosa Sierra from Avonale. I would like to begin, I would like to bring an incident to your attention. Yesterday, Kings County Behavior Health met with our community of Avonale to discuss services available to our community. During the discussion, they said during COVID, services were provided via telephone, which I was surprised. I made a comment saying that behavioral health services worked via telehealth, being that medical was frontline. Lisa Lewis asked me, "Were you sent home?" I said to her that she must have been offended to my comment that was said in general. Community members that work in agriculture, the prison, law enforcement, and some school personnel continue to work in prison in Avonale, as well as many others. I didn't appreciate the way she addressed me. I found her manner to be condescending, dismissive, and unprofessional. Being that she's a behavioral health professional, she would be more sensitive and aware of how words could affect people, not knowing what they have been through and may be going through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker card I have is Lupe Villa.
Good morning. Thank you for being here. Chairman, members of the board. Lupe Villa with the Elections Office. As you may recall, during the last board meeting, I provided a brief statement regarding discrepancy found in our election precincts. So I'm here today to provide a full report to your board and the public regarding the discrepancy. Late afternoon Monday, October 17th, a discrepancy was identified with streets listed in the incorrect precincts. Staff immediately began to task, the task of conducting a complete review of the precincts associated with the number eight ballot. The review was conducted in two rounds and was completed late Tuesday, October 18th. The following is a breakdown of the first round of the ballots. There were 69 impacted ballots. 14 voters received ballots that included the contest for the 22nd Congressional District and not the 20th Congressional District, I should have been. In short, the 22nd Congressional District lost 14 voters to the 20th Congressional District. Also in that round, there was four voters that received ballots with Pioneer School, Area 5. 40 voters received ballots with Hanford High, Area 1. 11 voters received ballots without City of Hanford, Area E, instead of Area A. And that is the impact to 69 voters in round number one. The following is a breakdown of the 64 impacted ballots in round number two. 47 voters received ballots that incorrectly included the contest of Area D for the City of Hanford, and 70 voters received ballots without Area D for the City of Hanford. In short, Area D lost 30 voters because of discrepancy in the precincts. Immediately after the findings, we took, I took Correct Action Plan, and we started executing that plan on Wednesday morning. On Wednesday, October 19th, we finished printing the correct ballots. That is 133 ballots that were printed and stuffed and mailed out to the voters of Kings County. Voter packets were assembled, which included a letter in ancient Spanish to the voter, and only impacted voters received that letter. All packets were put in the USPS mail stream on Thursday, October 20th, and we started receiving calls from voters on Friday, October 21st, that they received the packet. So they started, the letter was very specific to contact the office should they get this letter, so we can walk them through the process of how the mistake was found and what we had done. Part of the resolution included me contacting each candidate that was impacted from a school, from a local school district to congressional races. from a local school district to congressional races. I also contacted the city manager for the City of Hanford, the county superintendent of schools, both impacted school superintendents, that are Pioneer and Hanford High. And the discrepancy in corrective action plan was explained to each contact, and it was well-understood with no questions. Additionally, a walking list was offered free of charge to each candidate for campaign purposes. Out of the 133 impacted ballots, six ballots have been returned. I was able to contact four of those six voters and issue the explanation to them. All impacted ballots have and will continue to be isolated until after the election. The discrepancy was also shared with Secretary, California Secretary of State's office and both the Republican and Democratic Central Committees. In short, late Monday, October 17, 2022, a discrepancy was identified, and by Thursday, October 20, all corrective steps were taken to include the mailing of all 133 impacted ballots, with some voters receiving their ballots on Friday, October 21. You guys have any questions? Need further breakdown?
Good. Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns? Appreciate your quick response and...
Yep. Thank you. And I appreciate the support. You know, it was, it was difficult to find such a discrepancy, and it's very small. It's .002 of the 61-plus thousand ballots we've mailed out, 133. It's not very uncommon for that to happen during redistricting. So I can assure you with certainty that our surrounding counties have also suffered from the same, not as a small level, but at a higher number. So, you know, it happened. We took the responsibility. We addressed the issue, and here we are. So.
Very good. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the support.
Good luck on the election. And you start opening up this weekend, correct?
Yeah, we'll start, the Moore Vote Center will open on Saturday, the 29th, which is this weekend. And we're also going to open our office as a vote center. We'll be doing poll worker training today, tomorrow, and Thursday, so they'll be ready for Saturday. And then on the 5th, November 5th, we'll open the additional five centers. We're a total of seven to run all the way through Election Day. Yep.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You guys have a good day.
Thanks.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised, and there is no written correspondence.
Very good. Thank you. Last call for those in person. See no one come forward. We'll close out the unscheduled appearances and move on to the next item, which is a reporting out on the closed session that was held on October 18. Diane?
Yes, the board took no reportable action.
Very good. Thank you. The, now we'll move to the first action item of the day, and that's the approval of the minutes from the meeting held on October 18. Have board members had an opportunity to review the minutes?
No question, comment, move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboon. Any additional questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley is not in his chair. Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show, the minutes stand approved, four in favor with one absent. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted by one motion at the request of any board member. Any item may be removed and made part of the regular agenda. Has anyone have any questions on the consent calendar?
If there's no question, comment, I'm going to move it presented.
Second.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Peterson. Thank you very much. Discussion. Here and there seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show, four in favor, one absent. The consent calendar stands adopted. Thank you very much. Moving to regular agenda items. First item comes from the Assessor Clerk Recorder's Office. Consider a memorandum of understanding with the California Department of Justice. Kristi Lee, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Kristi Lee, Assessor Clerk Recorder. This morning, I am coming to your board to ask if you would enter into a memorandum of understanding with the California Department of Justice for the establishment of an electronic recording and delivery system. In order to electronically record transaction documents that have currently been manually submitted, the Recorder's Office must first enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Justice. The MOU establishes the county's responsibility for payment of the county's proportionate share of the Department of Justice's direct costs for regulation and oversight specified in the ERDA of 2004. The current fiscal year's allocation is $1,064 and is included in the current budget. Subsequent annual amounts are projected to be similar, but will be determined by the number of participating counties and their actual recordings. The annual amount may decrease if more counties enter into the agreement and decide to participate. The ERDA of 2004 enabled counties to electronically accept, record, and return certain documents or instruments affecting a right, title, or interest in real property. Before a county puts an ERDS into operation, the Attorney General must evaluate, certify, and approve the system, along with developing and adopting regulations and oversight. Since the cost cannot be otherwise recouped, each participating county is responsible for paying its proportionate share of the costs. The electronic recording and delivery system, through subsequent effort, has been implemented and is being used by the constituents in 41 out of the 58 counties. It creates efficiencies by allowing title companies and real estate agencies to electronically record documents rather than having to physically deliver them or to mail them into the Recorder's This item has been approved as deformed by county council. And do you have any questions?
Good. Thank you. Questions, comments? Supervisor Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the recordation of property transactions, in your normal process, you're going to have hands-on, eyes-on, they're going to walk it in, and you're going to see that. So how do you expect electronically, you know, provided document, how will that be reviewed in your office?
Thank you. Yes, it'll be reviewed in the same manner, basically. The, the documents will just be transmitted electronically, but the staff will still have to go through them in the same manner that they do now.
Okay. Just this, so same, same. No less, no more, but just a review of the document?
Correct. A little more efficiency, because when they do come in, they're already, they won't have to be scanned in separately. So they will, and then the back and forth. You know, sometimes documents are submitted that are rejected because certain elements are not included, like they're required to be. And so the rejection process is quicker as well, because as the staff reviews the documents, they can electronically notify the title company that a change needs to be corrected.
Yeah, it's just my concern is, you know, I mean, most notaries are pretty honest, but, you know, with respect to the issue of subscribing witnesses, right? Where, you know, a notary doesn't have to accept an ID, they can just say, well, I know that person, and they, they file that form. And I'm just wondering, do you flag those at all?
On documents that require a notary, they have the notary, I forget the terminology for it, but the acknowledgement by the notary on the form itself. So it is signed, you know, penalty of perjury, and then the notaries do record in our office their notary certification, too.
Yeah, it's just one of those things. It's, it's a, I think, a flaw in the, in the code that allows for, you know, some nefarious things to go on, right? So, you know, they're, they don't, they don't get an ID, and so if somebody is trying to, you know, hey buddy, let's, let's take this property, you know, there's an opportunity there, because they don't have to provide an ID. And, you know, in family scenarios, there's been, you know, other problems with this as well, where one family member is supposed to get something in a, in a deed or a trust, and then all of a sudden, you know, they go, and the document's already been filed, it's in someone else's name, and, you know, the, the notary just uses this opportunity with a lack of ID requirement to record that. And then it causes hell to, you know, ever get that property out of that name and back into the proper ownership. So I don't know how we do deal with that, but I know it's becoming a bigger issue today than yesterday, and so I just throw that out as something to be aware of.
Right. And you are correct in that there is a real estate fraud fee that's corrected with every recorded documents that, document that goes to the district attorney's office. And if anything does come through that looks suspicious or seems like there, it might not be completely legitimate, it is referred by our office over to the district attorney for investigation.
Very good. Yes, second. Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboon. Any other questions, comments?
No, I just, I brought this to Kristi during COVID. A lot of complaints about people in the realty world. As our offices were shut down, our time of day to get work done was limited. This would have sped things up at that time. And I think during our holiday closures, to help out as well, too. People don't have as much time, they're busy in their lives, so they're able to, you know, they can submit it at night, doesn't need to be recorded the next day, so that makes their, their day go a little faster. So I think Kristi, for working on this, takes some time, but that's just how government works, so I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you for those comments. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show, that item stands approved, four in favor with one absent. Thank you very much. Good luck. The next item comes from administration regarding Operation Green Light. And Mr. Hill, would you like to start with a couple of comments? And then Domingo is going to do the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed Hill, County Administrative Officer. This item is being brought to your board today after a comment or a question by one of your board members on Operation Green Light in support of our veterans. Being the son of a Marine who served for 20 years, I know that it's very important to support our veterans. I also know that it's important to administration as well as your board. That being said, we work with staff to have this process set up. We couldn't think of anybody better to assign this to than Mr. Domingo Cruz here, being a veteran himself. I'd like to thank him, staff at Public Works, as well as Veteran Services in helping us, and I'm sure Mr. Cruz will thank those who also helped. So, over to you, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Again, Domingo Cruz, one of your administrative analysts in the administrative office. So this morning, staff is requesting that your board adopt a resolution in support of Operation Green Light for veterans from November 7, 2022 to November 13, 2022. So this resolution reflects that the residents of Kings County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served the country and this community in the armed forces. It also encourages citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. So the National Association of Counties, NACO, got behind the Operation Green Light program, which is an initiative to shine a light on the plight of veterans in counties across the United States, who are having a hard time connecting with benefits after serving their country. This new program was endorsed by the NACO Board Meeting, July 23, 2022, in Adams County, Colorado. So approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, with an estimated 20% increase transitioning to civilian life in the near future. Studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. Active military service members transitioning are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. So the contribution and sacrifices of the men and women who serve in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Veterans continue to serve our community through numerous veteran service organization, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran services officers in the 29th state to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. So this program will most likely attract current and soon-to-be veterans to seek out the Kings County Veteran Services for assistance, which may bring additional millions of dollars to the county in the form of monetary benefits. So the local governments and citizens of Kings County are encouraged to display a green light in a window of their place of business or residence as part of Operation Green Light for veterans. As Mr. Ed Hill said, if you recall, in one of your board's meetings in this past summer, Supervisor Peterson inquired to staff what Operation Green Light was, and Scott Hallwell, our county veteran services officer, provided the information in a later board meeting. And with the direction of the county administrative officer, thank you again, Mr. Ed Hill. And in coordination and collaboration between administration, the Veteran Service Office, and Public Works, especially the expertise of Jamie Solis and Jim Henderson from Building Maintenance, thank you, gentlemen. The county is shining green lights on several county buildings and structures starting November 7 to November 13. So I'll call on Jim Henderson and Jamie Solis, which will discuss the locations of where the lights are going to be shown.
Morning, Chairman, members of the board. Jim Henderson, Building Maintenance Superintendent. So the first slide we have here, that is a picture of the banner that'll be placed as you drive in. As you come in down Mather, we'll have one on the right-hand side, and as you approach the courtyard, we'll have one there. And then this slide right here depicts the location of the green light. So the three pole lights, as you come in through Mather, those will be green. There'll be a banner on the right-hand side. You'll come in, there'll be a banner. As you get to the courtyard, we're going to light up the front of Finance, which is the back of HR. We're going to do the old court. We'll hit the courtyard with green lights. We're going to illuminate the memorial wall, and then we'll have green lights doing the two flags. And then, so as, so as you drive in from Mather, this is, we did a little test run one night. We came out, and we just lit up a portion of it. So this is as you come in down Mather Drive, we lit up some of the green, but all the white you see, those will become green as we, when we go into full, full force. Excellent. Oh, and then on the, where Dom's pointing, that green light is where we're going to have the banner as you come in. Our thought is, as you pull in, most people come in on the right-hand lane, and they're looking to the right. The only ones we really ever see in the left-hand lane are usually going to the Sheriff's Department there. So hopefully that'll attract their attention. And then this example of the admin building with the flagpole lights and one of the ballard lights lit up. And we actually have some bigger LED lights that we're going to place in front of the flagpole, and we're going to illuminate them even more with green. And then this is back again, the banner that, that will be placed up there. And then, and there's a picture of the memorial wall. That'll be right there.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Jamie Solis, Facilities Manager for Kings County Public Works. Permission to approach the bias?[1732.01][1732.01](Laughter).
At your own risk.
At my own risk.
Ruin your reputation.
So this project, it will consist...
Red lights in town, huh?
This project will consist of converting 48 existing lights with green gel filters. These gel filters were purchased in rolls and were cut into the shape to fit each fixture. They're professional gel filters made for lighting and are safe. We went ahead and we bench tested them in our shop, you know, just to ensure the safety. We'll be adding 17 green LED low-voltage strip lights inside the windows, which are low amperage and do not use much energy. We'll also use 13 green solar lights at the steps in the courtyards. We did notice it kind of got a little dark with the green lights, so we're going to add some steps at, the green solar lights at the steps in the courtyard, just to illuminate those better for safety purposes. There'll be a total of... There'll be a total of 78 lights that will be illuminated green for Operation Green Light for veterans. So if you guys have any questions or?
No, thank you. It's going to look good. During the week, a lot of actions too, so a lot of people see it when they come through here.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be, it's going to come out pretty good.
I thank Supervisor Peterson for bringing it to our attention. You know, I didn't even know this existed, so good way to represent our veterans.
And the pictures don't, don't do it justice. It really doesn't. It's not, when you see the person, it's amazing. And the brains behind Operation are.
I was going to say, yeah, I seen those three guys doing all the work. I know you two guys, but I didn't see you.
Right in their coat tails.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Scott, good morning. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Scott Hallwell, Kings County Veteran Services. Would just like to, number one, thank Supervisor Peterson for bringing this to our attention. It was something that, I was aware of the concept because the concept has been used, I think, for several years now. And as you drive through your neighborhoods, occasionally you will see a house that has front porch lights or garage lights that are lit up green. But I was not familiar with the Operation Green Light concept, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I'm grateful to NACO as well for them grasping out at this and partnering with the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers in doing this. I'd also like to thank administration, you know, for their very robust approach to this, Ed and Dom and anybody else in admin that's been involved. And then I'd also like to thank Dominic, Jamie, and Jim and their crew of folks here. Because we've sat down in several meetings and seen how much effort this really takes. And so, so don't let Jim and Jamie get by in thinking that they didn't do any work because they've really kind of, especially Jamie, has really been the, kind of the brains and the heart behind this. But I would like to thank your board for your consistent, unwavering support of veterans throughout the years here in Kings County. Kings County is known as a county that, you know, push come to shove, always supports their veterans. And we're grateful for that. We appreciate it. And also, the thought behind this is, is, you know, to kind of bring to the forefront the fact that it's not an easy transition when you separate from the military. There's people that served for four years, there's people that served for 40 years. I served for 30 years myself. And, you know, being a senior enlisted person, I, you know, kind of thought that I had contacts in the community and had it all figured out, and I was going to transition out and it was going to be smooth. And I think about the third day, I was sucking my thumb in a corner, trying to figure out, you know, what this new civilian world was about that I'd just been thrust into. And, and so it's a good opportunity to bring some focus to that. And I think Supervisor Valley and the other veterans in the room. In fact, if there are other veterans in the room, and I know there are, could you please stand so we can recognize you?
Hey.
And I'm glad to see women veterans in the room as well. I'm not going to go on and on, but women veterans are one of the groups that, that are struggling these days more than it seems like their male counterparts do. And so it's good to see those veterans here today. And once again, I thank everybody for their support.
Good. Thank you.
With all that, sir, the staff would like to say thank you to all the veterans that are in attendance again, and to the board, chamber, and also those veterans in the interweb that might be listening. Thank you. So the staff request that your board adopt a resolution in support of Operation Green Light for veterans from November 7, 2022, to November 13, 2022, to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our veterans and the men and women in uniform transitioning from active duty service. Just a side note again, the lights here, the green will stay on, the last time they will stay on will be your November 8. And then the lights outside, again, the night of November 7 to the night of November 13. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
No, just a big thank you to everyone for kind of grasping this. Just came to my attention, and I didn't know a lot about it as well, but it seemed like, you know, an opportunity to, to, you know, go across the nation and say thank you. I mean, we, we take our, you know, you take your freedoms for granted sometimes in a crazy world, and you never understand the importance till, you know, you need somebody. And so I appreciate all your efforts and those that serve. Thank you.
Is that a motion? Yes, sir.
And I'll second that with a comment. I took staff out to the base here a couple of years ago and got to the base, hit the gate, and, you know, told them my name, you know, I got my card, my elected official, you know, and they say, sir, you're not on the list. And I'm like, no, I'm supposed to be on the list. And Dom was in the backseat, window rolled down, he flashes his card, I get, we get full salute. And I thought, well, they must have found my name. But, you know, they, the, being in the military, you really respect veterans. And being a civilian like myself, I respect them as well, but not as much as someone that has served. So thank you, Dom, for taking us on. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
So just wanted to chime in and say thank you. I thank Mr. Howell and his staff, also at our county veterans department. They have a great reputation from the things that I hear from veterans who come here seeking services. And we know that, that that's not easy. And so I don't know what the wait time is for somebody to be seen. Mr. Howell?
It depends on the type of complaint. Currently, folks aren't waiting for.
That's good. That's extreme, that's extremely fast. And that's, that's what I wanted to, to point out because that's how you really say thank you to veterans by investing the resources, making sure people like you have the budgets and the staff to be able to provide those, to provide those services, right? The ceremonies are always nice, the recognition's nice, but it's putting money where your mouth is to make sure that, that we really, truly show that kind of respect because, because the need is out there. So thank you again to you and your staff for a job that you continue to do very well. Thank you.
Cody, Cody continues to carry him very, very quite well. Thank you, Cody. Any other questions? The item's been moved by Peterson, seconded by Verboon. If there are no other dialogue, the clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much, Dom. The next item also comes from administration. Consider approving the revised Cemetery District American Rescue Act planning. And Melissa, good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Melissa Shuffle, Administrative Analyst, Administration. On July 12, 2022, the board approved $500,000 in American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding for cemetery district operational relief. Initially, it was developed with the notion that the county had five cemetery districts and that each district would receive $100,000 in ARPA funding. Those were Corcoran Cemetery District, Hanford Calvary Cemetery, Hanford Cemetery District, Lemoore Cemetery District, and Armona Grangefield Cemetery. As administration of this program began, it was discovered that the county only has three cemetery districts, Hanford, Lemoore, and Corcoran, who have cemeteries located within the county boundary. In order to move this project along, new funding allocations are being proposed and are recommended to be based on the population totals for the cities in which the districts have cemeteries. The population per cemetery district is approximately 22,000 for Corcoran, 58,000 for Hanford, and 31,000 for Lemoore. The funds are then proposed to be allocated based on the percentage of the population for each district. Corcoran, 19%, should receive approximately $98,708. Hanford, 52%, should receive approximately $261,014. And Lemoore, 28%, should receive approximately $140,278. However, for rounding cleanliness, we are proposing that the allocations be for Corcoran Cemetery District, $100,000; Hanford Cemetery District, $260,000; and Lemoore Cemetery Districts, $140,000. There is no additional fiscal impact to the ARPA allocation that the board previously adopted. At this time, if you do not have any additional questions, I respectfully request to approve the revised Cemetery District American Rescue Act funding project.
Good. Thank you, Melissa. Questions, comments?
There are no questions or comments. To move for approval.
Okay.
I'll second Mr. Chair. And good job on breaking this down. I think this is, this is very fair. Those, Hanford especially has a large amount of cemeteries. And I, whatever, I know personally, I learned the impacts out of Corcoran. Obviously, those impacts had to be just countywide. It's not just something that was singled out in Corcoran. These directors and these board district members obviously got the same impacts due to pandemic and the increases in the funeral. So the only thing that I would ask is that, like we suggested with Corcoran, is that the cemetery districts send back reports, let us know how they use the money. If they haven't already proposed how they're going to use the money, but I think it would be good for the board to see how the money was used. Because this is, this, this is a good investment right here. And again, I want to thank staff and thank Parks and the Parks crew for going to Corcoran and helping out. That's money, time, and resources on top of the $100,000 for Corcoran. So thank you very much.
Mr. Hill, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Valley to the chair. We will build that in the contract that they provide that report on a regular basis on how the funds are spent.
And it's all, you know, I, I think that's great. We want to see how the funds are spent. During COVID, the biggest complaint I got from people was the fact that the Hanford Cemetery District shut down the cemetery so people couldn't go out to see their loved ones. That was kind of insulting to the people that had family out there. And we had no line of communication to staff to get them to resolve that. And when I did talk to the one gal that was in charge, she said, well, they were having bounce houses out there, having parties. And I said, well, did you get a picture of that? She said, no. I said, well, I think you're making it up. You can't leave, you can't lock down a cemetery. There are people that want to go up there and see their loved ones. Someone just died last week, you want to go up there and, you know, pay your respects. So I would like to have, see what they did with the funds. And I like to have a lot of communication open to whoever's in charge of the district. Because at that time, I probably had 14, maybe 13 calls, people complaining about the fact that Hanford Cemetery District was shut down. And so here we are, giving them money. So we need to get some respect back from them in that case. I had, I didn't know other cemetery did that but Hanford. So just like to have a conversation before we give them the check.
Mr. Chairman? Supervisor Valley? I just want to echo that because I got the same calls on, on Hanford, too. That's very true what Supervisor is saying, is saying on that. And
And I don't want to reward someone that was disrespectful to the people that were out there.
Yes, sir. I heard the exact same things that, that you got. And, and the only thing that I tell people is, yeah, we don't, obviously as a board, we don't want to, we don't micromanage, but we do appoint the board members to these cemetery districts. And so when people have issues, they call us. And I believe that gives us the, the right to call the Corcoran Cemetery District or whatever district to ask for a meeting, which I, which I have done, you know, without feeling like I'm stepping out of bounds. But, yeah, we, we do have responsibility. And, and so again, let's, let's, let's see in writing, too, how these, the money's proposed to be spent. And hopefully they do appreciate this investment.
Thank you. Supervisor Question? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So from the aspect of, you know, I mean, we, we hear out in the community, you know, when their, you know, funds are short. So did they reach out to us or were the, we're just, I wasn't aware this was coming, I mean, other than reading it in the agenda. And so did, did the cemetery districts reach out to us?
This was an item brought forward by Supervisor Valley. And then the application of the ARPA funds is correct that it, it was an impact countywide. So and all of our other aspects that we deploy or use ARPA funds is done on that basis. So we applied it throughout all of them. So we reached out to these other cemetery districts to see if there was interest in receiving these funds.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would agree with Supervisor Verboon. I mean, even through, you know, our granting process that, you know, we've seen that, you know, in some cases, folks are applying that, that shouldn't be applying. And, you know, and, and, you know, there's always those people that are going to reach out. So I just didn't know how this came to us and, and, you know, how we verify that, you know, at the end of the day, we're responsible for the ARPA funds and we've got to report back on how they were used. And, and it's interesting that we didn't get, you know, reached out to, but I, I know you're, you were in contact with your cemetery, so.
We, Mr. Chair, just real quick. And, and just to backtrack real quick, just very simply, we, there was, there was a lot of complaints on social media about the, the state of Corcoran Cemetery, overgrown grass, weeds. There was some ugly pictures on there. And so I, I worked with the, a couple of the board members, and we went and we had a meeting with the manager of the cemetery district. And he said, look, we went from an average of three to four funerals a month in Corcoran. Pandemic hits, now we're at 16 to 19 a month. So my guys are digging, staff is digging graves, and we're overlooking the landscape, yes. And it was very ugly. And that's when I asked permission, if Park staff could come to Corcoran and help out. We had a meeting out there and they came, they dedicated one of their Saturdays, one of their days off. They came, they cleaned that place up. But so in learning some of the impacts of the pandemic, I reached out to Mr. Hill and I said what I said earlier, hey, look, Corcoran, this isn't a special thing that's happening in Corcoran. Obviously, all the cemetery districts in the county have to be experiencing this. Could you look, look into it? And if you get the same kind of feedback that we got from Corcoran, would you mind taking a look at ARPA funds so we can help them? So I, going back to Corcoran, some of the things that I know I'm totally going to do with this money is either hire some part-time workers to come in and help them get caught up on some of the things that
They can fix your backhoe.
Yeah, yeah, there is an issue with that, too. There's water issues out there. But just simple things that, you know, that we learned and things that Parks manager, department head shared with them, who are, our parks, our Parks Department head actually worked for a cemetery district before, right? And Tim did. And so when he met with the folks in Corcoran, he, he gave them some really good advice, like what chemicals you should be using to, you know, weed the place out over time and how long it's going to take in it. And I really appreciate his time on that. And so that's, that's how we got here. But we voted on this money before, right? And then, and then now you're just learning, hey, look, it's not as simple as giving everyone $100,000. There's, you know, you had to come back and you're only back here today to, to get the authorization to reorganize how you're going to reallocate, how you're going to put this money out. But the concept, we passed this already, right?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions or comments?
I don't know if there's a second, if there was, and I
There was.
I thought you made the motion.
Oh, I had Fagundes and Valley.
Okay.
That's what I have.
Okay. So, yeah. See if you can pay attention, or they got a little crypt out there at the cemetery.
I have ADD.
Yeah. They have a little crypt out there with your name on it.
You only write down what I did, but I didn't write it down.
Ah. With that, any other discussion?
I did second the last one, though.
You did?
Yeah.
That was a couple of times ago, though. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. But the record show that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Good luck. Checks in the mail? All right. Man, you sure know how to clean out a room. Yeah. Everybody's got to go to work now. Gee, thank you. The next item on the agenda comes from the Health Department, Department of Public Health. A couple of items. First item is to proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we do have a public hearing scheduled for 10 o'clock this morning.
Will this take very long?
No.
Um.
We can start later.
You want to go ahead and do the public hearing, then? Yeah. Do you mind waiting a little bit? Okay. All right. The time is, we are past the 10 o'clock. We do have a public hearing set on today's agenda. And that public hearing comes from the Human Services Agency. And for a couple of items, to talk about the plan that outlines how permanent local housing allocation funds will be used. Wendy, thank you very much for being here. And if you'd like to kick off the discussion.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Two weeks ago, we were here on October 11.
We provided a study session just going over the process for eligible functions that the permanent local housing allocation PLHA could be used for. We have an opportunity to apply for just under $1 million over five years. It requires a public hearing and public notice, an opportunity for public comment. So through the study session two weeks ago and then a public notice that was posted on October 15th, and I do have a correction on the last page of this agenda item. It says October 14th. It's actually the 15th that the public notice actually went out. We had indicated to you that we would like to put the money that's available for use at this point, which is a little over $700,000, to fill a gap so we can complete the Stardust to Sunrise conversion. And our plan was attached with the public notice and was available for review both through the documents that the board posts with the agenda two weeks ago and then also with our public noticing. We've received no written email or phone feedback or comment from the public over the past 10 days. And I'm happy to go into more detail, but I feel like I'm repeating what we did two weeks ago. And with that, I just really would like you to open public comment. And at the conclusion, we're seeking your approval of a resolution.
Very good. Thank you, Wendy. Are there any questions or comments for Wendy before we open the public hearing? Hearing or seeing none, we'll open the public hearing for the purpose of receiving testimony regarding the plan that outlines how permanent local housing allocation funds will be used. And is there anyone that would like to offer up testimony this morning? Seeing no one come forward, do we have anybody online?
I do not have any written correspondence and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised for this item.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Last call? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back. Wendy, would you like to close?
I just wanted to indicate that we've got our partners on this project here from Kings County Homeless Alliance and KCao. And we are seeking the board's approval and hoping you'll adopt the resolution authorizing HSA to apply for the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program with the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Wendy. Appreciate that. Bring it back for discussion by the board? Any discussion? Questions? Comments? There is a resolution in the agenda that
I'll second.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboon. Additional discussion? Hearing or seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Let the record show, that item stands approved. Five in favor. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll go back to the agenda. And we'll take up the Breast Cancer Awareness Month of October. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Nicole Fisher, Public Health. I am honored to stand before you today representing Public Health and to announce October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Kings County. Second to skin cancer, breast cancer is the most common cancer among American women. One in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime. That's one person every two minutes in the U.S. The two most common risk factors of breast cancer are being born female and getting older. In 2022, it is estimated that nearly 44,000 people in the U.S. will die from breast cancer. Men also get breast cancer. And about one out of every 100 breast cancers diagnosed in the U.S. is found in a man. It's important for all women ages 40 and over to get a mammogram every year. And women over the age of 20 should prioritize an annual well-woman exam and talk to their provider about breast cancer and risk factors to determine when to begin annual mammograms. It is important to know your risk, talk to your provider about your family history, get screened. Finding it early and treating it early can save your life. And know what is normal to you. Let your provider know if something doesn't look or feel right. The Kings County Department of Public Health is asking the board today to adopt a resolution proclaiming October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Kings County. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Supervisor Valley.
Thank you. Do we have a press release ready to go on this one? If not, we should.
Yeah. No, we could definitely put one together to send out, for sure.
Very good.
Second.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboon. Additional discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Hi.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved. Five in favor. Thank you very much. Athletes all month have been carrying pink ribbons and pink whistles for officials and certainly want to thank you for joining onto that campaign. So thank you very much. Rosemary, you want to talk about?
COVID, MPX.
Yeah, everything that's affecting the health emergency.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Rosemary Rand, Department of Public Health. I'm here today to provide you an update on COVID, something small on seasonal flu, MPX, and West Nile virus. The number of COVID cases has continued to decrease since the end of July. For the past two weeks, we had 133 cases. And in my prior report, there were 194, so it continues to decrease. BA5, or the Omicron variant, remains the dominant strain among samples sequenced in the county. The proportion of BA5 offshoots, such as BQ1, which you may have heard of in the news, have increased nationally. None have been noted in Kings County. However, a case was identified in a neighboring county. Kings County remains in the low green for community transmission levels. Local hospitalizations have increased slightly since my last report. There are eight hospitalized cases, six who are Kings County residents, four in med surg, one in OB, and one in the emergency department waiting for a bed. Testing continues in the county at various locations and also at Public Health. During the last two weeks, a total of 4,467 tests were done totally, total in the county. Over the last two weeks, 1,595 vaccines were given in Kings County, and this continues to increase. The increase is likely related to the new bivalent booster being released for even six years and up. Residents can get vaccinations at the Health Department, local pharmacies, several pop-up clinics around the county, and the current schedule is on our website. The bivalent boosters are also available and they are formulated to protect against the BA4 and BA5 sub-variants. This weekly COVID report and additional data is located on our website at kcdph.com. And last week, I reported that the governor announced the plan for California State of Emergency Order to end on February 28th, 2023. It is anticipated that this will allow time for any winter surges and any legislation related to waivers to be instituted. As always, we'd like to remind everyone to stay home when you're sick, get tested if experiencing COVID-like symptoms, and get vaccinated or boosted if you've not yet. Masks are still required in healthcare settings, clinics, skilled nursing facilities, and areas of shelters and correctional settings in which healthcare is being provided. Just a quick update, in the last two weeks, we've had 17 cases of influenza type A reported. And the last time we had that number was in the March of this year when we had a spike. This indicates mainly that influenza is circulating in Kings County. And again, we'd like to remind everyone to get their flu vaccines if they haven't yet. Flu vaccines are available at your medical providers' offices, pharmacies, and clinics, as well as flu and COVID vaccination events around the county. Individuals can receive their flu and COVID booster vaccinations at the same time, just different injection sites. MPX, as of this week, there's only two cases in Kings County and 136 cases among the counties in Central Valley. The outbreak in California is declining and currently averaging 15 cases per day. The information is on our website. And we currently are vaccinating close contacts and high-risk individuals. We currently have 30 doses still in inventory. And as of West Nile virus, those have remained level. We have six cases with one pending lab confirmation. So five total neuroinvasives and the one potential and then one non-neuroinvasive. The number of COVID cases have reduced and the county has remained in the low community transmission level for over a month. In addition, MPX has leveled off, as have West Nile virus cases. At this time, I'd like to check in with you on if you'd like Public Health to continue with an every-two-week reporting update or move to once a month or as needed in the public comment. I am available for any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Discussion?
Quick question, Mr. Chair. Did you, for clarification, you said 1,000 vaccines in the county last week?
Yeah.
Was that combined flu or?
No, just COVID. I can get you the numbers of flu.
That's fine.
But yeah, it's only COVID. It's either first-time COVID, second, you know, the first initial series, or the boosters.
Oh, wow. Okay. Yeah, I didn't know it was
Yeah, no, just COVID.
So there's a new booster out, right?
The new booster that just came out this fall, the bivalent.
So that'll be the third one, right?
Yeah, so you should have gotten your first, your second. Then you could have gotten two more
Yeah.
of the same. And then now there's a new bivalent that's more. So really, it's one, two, and it's a third, because then you'll be your booster.
So what's the, what's the third one called?
The bivalent.
Bivalent, okay.
Just got to remember bivalent. But like, I got my flu shot and my bivalent.
Does it cure monkeypox too?
Hmm? Doesn't, no, you have to get a different vaccine for that.
Just checking for Greg. I think once a month is fine.
Once a month? You want to stay with once a month?
I, you know, I mean, the media grabs things and runs with them. And, but I do understand, you know, I mean, from at least watching the news, RSV is something that's pushing some hospitals. And, you know, I don't want to see us get overrun, but that's not our, you know, control. But just making sure that we have the opportunity to be updated with respect to, you know, hospital status and how all these three things are combining. But, and you have one question. The flu variety this year is, I guess, because of RSV. And then typical flu virus, the challenges with coughing, is it, is it one of those types of flus again?
It looks like it. I have to study deeper. What we're seeing right now is influenza A, which tends to be a little bit intenser influenza. I have to look at what the vaccine formula was for flu, because I didn't research it really before I came. Because, you know, it depends on what the mix is, is if you're going to have a good coverage or not. But with RSV, RSV can be significant. Like, and you're right, it does overrun, because kids tend to get it and then the parents get it. And it's a really bad cold and flu feeling. So we'll monitor that. But as for flu, so far, people have been doing okay. But time will tell. And of course, if you're at risk, if you're elderly or immunocompromised, your responses to flu are more significant.
Elderly.
I'm elderly. They're saying over 50 with COVID.
He's older than both of us.
And I look younger than you.
Botox. It's the botox.
I think it's the bottle tox.
Oh.
I knew it started with a B.
Good, thank you. Yeah.
Do you want me to?
Once a month?
Once every two weeks.
I think everybody's kind of once a month or in case something comes up.
Okay.
And we need, you know, if we have a med surge or
If there's
Correct.
an increase in numbers.
Yeah, yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and your staff. I know being on the front line like that is difficult. So thank you very much. Very good. The next item comes from Information Technology. And talk about SB 156. Good morning, John. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chairman, fellow board members. I'm here about a broadband grant opportunity. And I'll give you a little overview. In 2021, the Senate passed Senate Bill 156, which allocates $6 billion towards expanding broadband infrastructure and access in California. Information Technology will provide information on the various funding areas for board consideration. There is no fiscal impact to Kings County, although it's going to be a reimbursement rate. So in the unlikely event that they don't accept our proposal, there could be staff time. And/or if we hire somebody to help, that could be a loss. But the grant money stays at CPUC and it's reimbursed once you show deliverables on what you say you're going to do. More background, SB 156 allocates money for broadband infrastructure and access throughout the state. There are three areas of funding, what they're calling middle-mile infrastructure, last-mile infrastructure, and broadband planning and design. The department will outline what each funding pool is meant to resolve and also show where this need exists within Kings County. The department's seeking the board's approval to apply for the grant of up to $500,000 for the broadband planning and design option. Okay. Okay. I didn't bring my tap shoes, so I'm glad this is working.
Challenges with broadband.
All right. So Kings County Broadband, I titled this Ready for the Future. There you go. As I mentioned before, there's three phases of funding. There's middle-mile grants, last-mile grants, and broadband planning and design grants. The middle-mile grants fund locations without fiber optic cable to serve cities and towns. This is not meant to bring fiber or internet service to individual homes or businesses. And there is only one town without fiber capability, according to the maps I did at the time of this slideshow, which is Kettlemann. As it turns out, the school at Kettlemann does have fiber, but they never built out any services for businesses or the community in Kettlemann.
So the businesses there, like the In-N-Out Burger, they're not fiber? They don't, how do they operate?
They might have satellite that's
Wireless, yeah.
Yeah. It's ViaSat is supposedly the best option out there, which is 253. They might have access to Starlink. That's a newer service from Musk's company.
So what would broadband give them?
That would give them a lot higher speeds. Because Starlink has two flavors. They have a business flavor now. But the regular flavor was about 100. And according to Chuck Kenny, it's now more like 80 meg's down.
Oh, it goes down every day.
Yeah, as, well, they're getting more subscribers. They're supposedly going to address that with more satellites, more lower earth orbit satellites. They do have a business package, which is more expensive. I want to say it's $600 a month. And I think the equipment's more expensive too. But that'll get you supposedly 250 meg download to 300. Anyway, but according to the FCC map, which didn't include Starlink, it's only wireless access via ViaSat. That's the best you can do. Or very slow-speed cabled type. All right. The last mile grants, this is meant to bring connectivity to individual homes and businesses. This phase has yet to start as middle mile is still being installed. They want the middle mile installed because they don't want you to pull the wire to the wrong place. And the last is the broadband planning and design grants. Kings County is starting the application for broadband design and planning grant from the state. There was $50,000 set aside for the whole state for cities, counties, and tribal areas. Next, I have a listing of the population designation areas and internet speeds available with the zip codes. But for Armona, you can, you can get up to 1.2 gigabits per second from Comcast. Avonel up to 1 gig from Charter. Corcoran is up to 1.2 from Comcast. Hanford up to 1.2 from Comcast. Lemoore up to 1.2 gigs from Comcast. Kettlemann City, as I stated before, is only 35 megabits per second from ViaSat with no fiber. Stratford has up to 1.2 gigs from Comcast. And the Tatchee Casino itself has 1.2 gigs from Comcast. But the Tatchee residence, residential area only has 35 meg's from ViaSat. But there is fiber at the casino. So that's good news. And I just found out on Friday that the tribe is working to get the people on the residential area cabling to do high speed. That's all I know at this point. I found that out from Frank Gorick on Friday. So, and I've been trying to reach out to them. I have not been successful. Okay, Kettlemann City, this is the only place without fiber connectivity. I guess I could have struck that, but I'd already submitted this. Because I did find out there is fiber there. But the state is running more fiber to Kettlemann and what they call open fiber. So let's say it's owned by AT&amp;T or Comcast. This open fiber will be more like a fair playing field for any other ISP that would want to move into Kettlemann. And it was included in the state's May 2021 revised budget. And as such, Kings County did not need to apply for the middle-mile type grant. Coincidentally, fiber will also go to Avonel, Corcoran, and along the 198 freeway, right, right through town, and from 198 down to the 33, then up to Avonel along 269 to run back up through Huron and back across the 198, which will give us a fiber loop. That's important because if some backhoe, we call them fiber-seeking backhoes, but somebody cuts the fiber, you can still get around the other way and your internet service won't be eliminated while they fix that. Next, I have a map to show basically what I just described. But you've got, on the far right there, is my sale there is Visalia, and so they have fiber going straight along the 198 all the way out to, what is that, the 269 at Huron, and it keeps going up along the 269 and then down along, and then, more importantly for us, though, it goes down Lemoore through Stratford through Kettlemann, and then down to the corner on the 33, back up to Avonel, and then back up. So that gives us a loop. It was also the regional broadband consortium identified the west side of the valley as the number one priority to get fiber, because they have almost nothing out there. Okay, the next piece, the last mile projects. Kettlemann City will need last mile money to bring connectivity to homes and businesses. Tatchee residents, I should say now, may also need last mile money, and I'm going to try to let, let them know that this money is available, but it'd probably be more of a wait as opposed to if they wanted to get it done now. There may also be specific areas within towns and cities that also need some last mile, and this is where the planning and design grant comes into play. I also wanted to mention this. Um, it's not related to SB 156, but during COVID, there was emergency grants for, uh, people if they met certain requirements of income, and it was a $30 voucher. Um, it's at 0.75 if you're in a tribal, uh, area, um, federally recognized tribal area, sorry. And I did look at Comcast, just because that's the one I'm using here, uh, and it's, they have a 2999, uh, plan that's 100 meg internet down, which is pretty, pretty good. And so basically, in essence, it would be free if you meet these requirements. So it's, um, you're likely eligible if your total household income is below 200% of the federal poverty line, or if you or someone you live with currently receives any government benefits like SNAP, Medicaid, SSI, WIC, Appell Grant, or Free/Reduced Lunch Program. And if your child is getting free lunch because they opened it up to everybody recently, that does not qualify. You have to meet those requirements that were established. Um, and you can find out more by going to affordableconnectivity.gov, or just visit your internet provider and just look somewhere on the, that front page will say Affordable Connectivity, and it lists out what their plans are that are available. And then you can apply either through Affordable Connectivity or through the ISP. It'll mark, it'll walk you through how to apply for that. Um, and it, we have about 16,000 people in Kings County that are already using this program. But I thought I'd mention that. I'm open for questions now.
Very good. Thanks, John. So I thought the broadband was supposed to connect people that don't have access to internet and cell service. What about those people?
It, it, that's exactly what it's supposed to address, but also if you're under-
Because, I mean, I don't have access to gas. Uh, I don't have access to internet. My cell service is one bar at the most. I gotta have a booster in my house, and I'm right outside town. So I know I have broadband at least half mile, three quarter mile down the street with a white field come up orange cone. I know I have cable a mile away and a mile away. So how do they connect people like, like me? I mean, there's more of them me out there. Uh, and I, we've talked about Kettlemann City, which, what about the rest of us in the country?
Well, that's why we need to hire somebody to help us, because, because I, I can't do this.
That's what the grant's for?
Sorry?
That would be what we're, we're doing today, is to hire someone to help with the grant process, to identify what our needs are?
Well, I was, actually, I reached out to several counties, and Calaveras County, I have a longstanding relationship with their CIO. He provided me with their successful bid or grant application, and, um, also outlined what they did. They are a member of RCRC, and I know we discussed that, uh, a couple of weeks back, but RCRC actually helped them do the whole application for this grant. And then they're using what they call Golden State Connect. It's a consortium, um, basically a different part of RCRC to do the work to actually, uh, get the fiber in the ground, and they worked with a, a vendor on the East Coast, and the name escapes me now, but, uh, they did a lump sum for $50,000 to do the, the, the RFP to go out and, um, get the work done. So-
We have some now. I know, uh, Sierra Pacific High School, they, they, they connect to the high schools together. Avonel has, I mean, 10 years ago, you could watch a movie, movie, driving through, with your car, driving through town. So will this connect to what we already have in existence, or have we already outgrown what they put in 10 years ago?
I don't know exactly what, uh, where you're talking about. I did, I did reach out to several other agencies, because that's what was in the Calaveras County's, uh, application. I reached out to the Office of Education. They've already provided me with a letter of support. Um, they are not going after any of this grant money. Um, I also reached out to Kettlemann City Community Service District, um, and they all wrote a letter of support at their last board meeting. I've reached out to Human Services, Public Health, the Library, Behavioral Health, and also Adventist Health, because, uh, this would affect their, probably their clientele more than anybody. But that study's going to look at where the most population is, and if there's enough of a population, or if there's enough money in the grant allocated for our county, not the grant, but the, 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 the next part, which is building it out, then they, that would be addressing places like where you live.
Yeah, because we're on NACO and CSAT. They talk about broadband. They talk about connecting the people that aren't in big populations. The, the, the one guy out in the country that-
It's the middle mile.
The middle mile.
Last mile.
Yeah.
Okay, well, like I said, that, uh, this is not my expertise, really. Uh, this is more like a community planning thing, and that's why I need the help from a, a vendor to do this. Um, but like I said, luckily, I did get to, it was, it was pretty daunting. It's like 30 pages of technical stuff just to, uh, do the application. And so I asked other counties, and like I said, Calaveras was nice enough. They also sent along, um, the follow-up questions that CPUC had and their successful answers.
Okay. All right. I just want to learn as much as I can, because, I mean, this is a big deal with NACO for the last three years about connecting broadband, but I, no one can ever ask any of the questions.
Well, it's basically going to be the best effort for whatever money we get awarded through the state.
I, I understand, I understand it's a good effort, but how does it affect the taxpayers? How does it affect people in the country? How does it affect people in lower, lower income communities? How does it affect people that live in town? I don't know. How, how do you, how do you compare it to Comcast or, or whatever the internet companies are?
Well-
I, I don't, then no one can answer these questions. They all talk, oh, we gotta be broadband, broadband. I'm like, okay, when you have broadband, we're going to pay a subscriber such as AT&amp;T or someone like that to, to hook up to it, so how does it affect us? And no one can answer those questions yet. And we've been doing this for over 10 years, and I haven't figured out, I'm not, I'm not grilling you about it. I'm just saying, these are questions that can't be answered, even at the higher levels.
Yeah, well, and one of the things, as, on the legislative platform, every year, I've said that they need to modernize their definition of, of high-speed internet, because it was 10 down and one up. The state is saying that the wiring infrastructure that gets put in on this, this grant needs to be able to provide 100 up, 100 down, which is a lot better than 10 one. Um, 10 one was a good definition 10 years ago, but it's not anymore.
Well, I, I think there's also the discussion of 10 down is better than nothing down, right? So a lot of the, the really rural communities in the Midwest, they have nothing, and they're like, okay, well, you know, if you're going to develop a federal program that, that mandates 100, we're not going to be involved, because the costs are prohibitive. But if we can get, you know, and, and I think it just speaks to, you know, the need for collaboration. I remember when we talked about this, I think we, we asked staff to reach out to Superintendent of Schools, and, and, you know, I, I think that, um, you know, it needs to be a collaborative effort countywide. We're behind A-ball now. There's going to be a bunch of money, you know, here we are, where there's a bunch of money, and, you know, we're way behind. I mean, the applications are already in. Some have already been approved, and, uh, you know, I, I just think, you know, as kind of the recognized, uh, central point for the county, that we ought to be, uh, you know, if, if there isn't a collaborative effort, that we ought to be initiating that collaborative effort and, uh, and, you know, forcing people to come to the table, because this is, this is what's going to, you know, help rural residents, which, you know, we can't get much more rural than Kings County in California, and, uh, you know, without someone being willing to, to step up, you know, and, and, you know, collaborate and create a, uh, you know, cohesive plan, we're just going to be shooting in the dark. And, and, uh, so I, I, but I do have, you know, a couple of questions with respect to the recommendation today, and, and I, I'm just trying to understand, uh, what's being asked for approval today. Um, you know, obviously, it says, "Receive information on Senate Bill 156 and potential impact to Kings County's direct task, uh, staff to take actions is deemed necessary for the implementation of, uh, Senate Bill 156." Okay, so that's pretty straightforward, but then you, uh, in here, it says, "Approval letter of support for any project or action necessary for implementation," and then authorize the chief information officer to sign any paperwork required to implement board-approved, uh, Senate Bill 156 projects. So board-approved, I'm just, you know, the whole process here, I'm a little confused as to what, you know, we're being asked. There, there are no, um, there's nothing before us today. I, I wouldn't be comfortable in committing someone to, uh, a project, um, you know, Rusty's in the, in the background there, um, without some, you know, upfront information. So I, I'm just a little confused what, what we're being asked to support here today, um, other than we need to get our ducks in a row and, uh, and start, you know, applying for funding, but we're so far, you know, behind that, that, uh, you know, this collaborative effort isn't going to happen overnight. And, uh, so I don't know, just maybe a little clarity. I mean, what, what, what are you asking for in this? Uh, and the C, uh, the, under the recommendation, C and D, just kind of, you're asking for a pre-approved support, or do you have, um, things you're asking to apply for?
I'm just asking for support, uh, on this process to apply for the, the planning grant. That's all. I'm, I'm sorry for the misleading wording, but that, that's the only thing I'm asking for.
We can be part of the planning, we can be part of the conversation, correct? Or bring someone in that can help us with our concerns?
Yes.
Because I don't want to, I don't want to apply for a, a broadband, and we take someone that has a, a 10 down and one up, and then I'm still at 0.0, and they go to 100, 100, 110. Just get some, the people that don't have nothing, get them going, too.
Okay.
Then that's my concern. And, and this is, this will be the way we could have that, that, that conversation, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I just believe, you know, there needs to be some sort of collaborative effort. We're, you know, if we just take one little, i- if, if, if the thought is, is that, you know, there is no opportunity for collaborative, uh, effort, then that's just what it is. And then, you know, we identify those projects or push people to, to, you know, make, make those initiated steps, because it's not going to happen without a plan, and right now, we don't have a plan, and, and, uh, and, you know, we're going to be behind A-ball on all this funding that's been presented to us. So I, I just hope that within this direction, you know, that we, um, form a more collaborative, uh, codifying, um, effort to, to include, you know, Superintendent of Schools and whoever, um, that, you know, this is an important issue. It's COVID proved that it's an important issue. Um, it's the way people, um, trade information and, and the way our kids learn, and, and, uh, I think we just need to be a little more aggressive on how we're going to go after these funds.
Very good. Thank you. And, and any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, as, as the recommendations are written?
Yes.
Anything you want to add?
I would like to add, if it's a friendly amendment, to add, uh, you know, a collaborative effort within the county to identify, uh, needs and, and, uh, interests.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree with that. You know, I don't want to, if someone has access to internet and Starlink and all that stuff, I'm not worried about him. He's got choices. I want to make sure the people that don't have choices have a choice. So I want to make sure the rural areas get connected, just as they've been selling it to us for the last 10 years. I'm tired of improving the people that's easy to improve, the low-hanging fruit. Oh, we got, we already got cable here. We'll just change it up, put the DuraCable in. It's good, it's people out in the country. This, this, put your money where your mouth is. This is where they sold it to us back about 10 years ago. They put out apps on our phone. You're supposed to download where you're at. They're supposed to gather data, and, uh, you know, the weaker guys should get the, get the, get a look at. So that's what my concern is in our county.
So you want to add a E to the list of, uh, recommended items?
Get to internet where there's no internet available.
Can we, can you do that, John?
Yeah, we certainly do that, yeah. It, it really, it, it always comes down to the money. If we get enough money to do all the work we need, um, that, that's really the big thing. Um, so, and they, they do look at by population, and that's why they call them-
That's not why they sold it to the electives. When they were in DC, they didn't sell it to the electives, the population. They sold it to the people, the people that have no access. And so they don't get to change it now if there's money available. I'm going to hold them to their feet in the fire. I'm tired of not having gas, internet, inter, uh, nothing. I mean, I'm only a mile outside of town, or half mile now, and I know it's right there. I see the damn thing coming up out of the ground, and let's, let's hook it up. Let's get it done. So get that connectivity going.
Okay, so we'll add, uh, item E to the, uh, recommended items to, um, address the, um, I don't know how you want to say that, non-populated areas for, uh, conductivity?
Yeah, or not, non, not in a census-designated area.
Yeah.
That, that, that word was in there a lot.
Correct.
That's why I work, use that wording.
And, and it, and it will help businesses a lot, because that's with the solar developments, with telemetry, with the, uh, well, um, monitoring for the groundwater management plans, telemetry on a lot of the water control devices. So it is kind of a misnomer to only try to, um, service the populated area.
I don't want to enhance it. I want to continue the build.
Correct, correct. And so there's a lot of areas that are in agriculture especially that need that conductivity to be able to conduct business.
Yeah, and there's also some monies available from USDA, so I know in your case-
Correct.
You have a farm, so there might be some applications for that, and around, uh, uh, saving groundwater.
Correct.
That might also be an avenue, but I'll try to explore that. That one was just unhelped.
The, the sweeps program.
Correct.
I've already, I'm applied. I apply every year.
Yeah. Supervisor Peterson, you have a follow-up?
Yep. I just wanted to get clarification from, uh, administration. So, uh, under the recommendation, item D, authorize chief information officer to sign any paperwork required to implement any board-approved Senate Bill 156 project. So, I mean, is that, I mean, if it's a board-approved, is that necessary? I mean, other than the, the limits of the, you know, dollar amounts that, that currently restrict department heads?
I, if I'm understanding your question correctly, Supervisor Peterson, uh, that action would give the CIO the ability to sign, uh, any grant applications, invoices, uh, any, uh, plans, uh, submittal of plans associated with this bill. Uh, it's kind of like an all-encompassing envelope. We do this with other projects that are state. Uh, they often require us to turn documents around that don't meet our timelines for a board meeting, so it gives them the ability to have that freedom to move this process forward.
Because in the item, it says any board-approved, so-
Yeah, that already been approved, right? I'm sorry?
Wouldn't it have already been approved?
You're approving that process today for 150, or excuse me, for 156, correct? Isn't that your ask, Mr. Devlin?
Yes.
All right, we can clean up that language.
It's just semantics for me here. I, I mean, I just don't want to commit to pre-approving things that, you know, I may not be aware of, and, and, uh, you know, other than, you know, if it's, if it's limited to, to the, uh, uh, you know, application for, um, assistance, um, is that, that your understanding, counsel, that it's just limited to the?
That's what I wanted to clarify, and that is my understanding, that I, I understand this motion and all the A through E being recommended today is focused on the grant application and not any other actions that would come after the grant application, but would simply allow us to apply for the monies. Um, and we can take the motion with that understanding that it applies only to, if that's what the board wants, and that is part of the motion, to, uh, the grant application process itself.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yep.
And, Ms. Chair, I would just add that, uh, I, I know the wording on, on, uh, item D can, um, make you feel uncomfortable. We, I questioned this going back to the previous CAO. We did the same language on, um, allowing any, um, given her the authorization to sign paperwork. Matter of fact, it's now rolled over to Mr. Hill. It's come up a couple of times on agenda where we do that. Um, we, we give this authorization to CAO, but, uh, I get what you're saying. Um, on it, you want to, you want to, you would like to, uh, feel a little bit more involved throughout the process.
Yeah, but I, I think, you know, if it, if it's just, because I don't know how broad the understanding, you know, is it, okay, 156 is- the understanding, you know, is it, okay, 156, is it, we have 156 funding, and we can, you know, you can apply for this, because the board said, you know, we pre-approved anything under 156. And, and I'm just wanting to make sure that I understand what I'm committing to, and, and what, you know, the CIO has the option to commit to, without, you know, some sort of board authorization. That's just clarification.
Very good, thank you. Good discussion. Any, any other comments?
Do you have a second yet, Mr. Chair?
No.
I'll make the check, a second.
Okay. The item's been moved by Braboon, seconded by Valley, and amended to add a non-populated areas to support business activities, I guess would be the simplest term. And any other discussion?
Nothing against you, John, just gotta get it off my chest.
I understand. It's frustrating not being able to-
They've been hitting this hard for years, and it's-
The, the good thing, too, with them getting rid of that ten, uh, ten-one, and then they were trying to do twenty-five-three, was supposed to be decent. That's because, like, AT&T and Verizon sell those little hotspots, so they were on purpose trying to keep that low, because then people couldn't get these types of grants.
Right.
So, because all the, all the previous ones were always very low, and, you know, it just didn't help. So, thank you.
Very good, thanks, John. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Braboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved. Five in favor, John. Good luck.
Thank you. I'll send along the stuff from Calaveras, so you can take a look.
Good, appreciate it.
We interviewed with RCRC yesterday, so hopefully we'll, we'll be part of it within the next couple of months.
Good. That concludes all of the business on today's agenda. We'll now move to board member announcements or reports on their own activities. Supervisor Peterson?
Yeah, we had our monthly air district meeting last week. We were notified that once again EPA is choking on our PM 2.5 plan. They want, it's basically an attack on dairies. They want more ammonia control, and ammonia is really a precursor issue that's, we've proven is not one of those issues. But other than saying it's unfortunate that EPA has weaponized itself in their, their representation, so we're going to, I think, well, I probably shouldn't say that, but the district is looking at strategies to, and, and I will say that CARB agrees and is very frustrated with EPA's decision. There was a lot of, obviously a lot of work, and millions and millions of dollars that go into preparing these plans. And the plan itself, I think, is, is solid, but unfortunately, there's, there's other interests at stake, that science isn't, isn't the, the protocol of the day. And, and so unfortunately, that, that is going, that strategy is developing. We're gonna have our, our study session coming up next week, or next month, and, and it'll be an issue. We'll have EPA Region Nine Director at that meeting, and I'm sure it'll be a spirited discussion about what's occurred, and, and how, how we're gonna fix it, but at least at this point. And more, more, more and more funds for, for tractor replacement, also vehicle replacement, and so doing our part to make sure we meet the goals of the Clean Air Act, and, and do it in a timely manner. With that, I think that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Braboon?
Took a long weekend, went and visited my family in Arizona, and I'm glad to be back.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Valley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just very quickly, I want to thank Bobby again, over at Commission on Aging. She did a good job out in Avenel, had Jeremy Elvis Pierce back again, and he, again, once again, he did a good job with seniors. They're getting them moving and shaken, and they enjoyed the lunch and the live music, live entertainment. Lifted their spirits. So, thanks again. Bobby.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Fagundes?
Also had one meeting last week with Bobby and Commission on Aging, and it was more of a discussion than anything, not that many things on the, on the agenda, so right along with that.
Good, good, appreciate it. High school volleyball, regular season wrapped up, and playoffs beginning this week, so good luck to those athletes and, and schools. The Pink Passion Picnic Supported Breast Cancer Awareness was held on Wednesday. Sheriff Robinson was a part of the fashion show, along with other officials, so good, good lunch. Yeah, the entertainment. Also had the opportunity to tour Kingsview since the remodel. First time I've been there since, really, since COVID, and the remodel, and the, the building looks very well, and they did a real good job with upgrading the facility. So if you not had a chance, between the pharmacy that's located in there, and all of the services Kingsview offers, they are now offering tours, if you would like to go through that facility and, and check out that operation. Master Plan for Aging, had a meeting in Tulare. The committee is beginning to address the healthcare, housing, and nutrition issues of seniors. Also had an opportunity to meet Donna Ortiz, who's now the new Health and Human Services Director in Tulare County. She was in attendance, and so thank everyone for that. The Calviva Meeting was not able to meet due to quorum problems and rescheduling for November. The Kings Partnership, and heard from Red Cross on the ready, ready rating of earthquake readiness, which was on October 20th. Also heard about the Kings United Way and the two-on-one system. This is their last meeting online, because the logistics of trying to work on broadband again is the discussion we had before, and so they will go, only have in-person meetings moving forward. The South Fork Kings had their last meeting of the year to discuss the GSA planning. You know, since the plan was not approved by all of the areas in the basing, basin, a coordination agreement is gonna be required, so we're gonna begin working on that, to see, since not all of the members are in approval. I offered to move the contested operation into a management program for the basin, to, to warrant further study, but it was, felt that the coordination agreement would be first on the priority, and then secondarily, we would look at changing some of that priority status to a project, just to try to get compliance, and get the program approved. The well-registration and data-sharing platform was approved, so we were gonna be moving into that arena, and applying for grants to, to work on telemetry, and try to get a lot of it done automatically. This first phase is only location, and really, location and yield, not really monitoring, so, but we built that in for the future. Also, the Kings River sediment removal project was discussed. Hundred and seventy thousand yards will be moved out of the Kings River, both north and south of 198. This is the first time in eighty years that that section of the river has been dry. So the, we're gonna try to go ahead and move some of that sediment out, and the recruitment for a general manager for South Fork Kings continues. That sediment is questionable as what it can be used for, because it is sediment. It's not really sand. It's, it, it's difficult to de-water. It's difficult to try to move into other areas, so we're gonna try to market that, or try to figure out where it fits into. The Kings County Library, Hanford Branch, held their book sale on Saturday. The weather was wonderful. Lot of people attended. Stratford had their Oktoberfest, or their idea of Oktoberfest with langweisen beans, for a drive-through Saturday dinner. Well-supported, almost two hundred tickets. Behavioral Health Meeting yesterday, on Monday. We talked about some of the electronic data, and some of the other things that are going on in the behavioral health arena. And then last night, the Kings County Historical Society met and focused on the sheriff, and again, Dave Robinson was there, talking about the historical role of sheriffs, and talked about each one of the fifteen sheriffs that have served Kings County going back to 1893. Very good presentation, very well received, and certainly want to thank him, and he left, but we certainly want to thank him for putting that PowerPoint together, and sharing that information with the group, so. With that, that wraps up my report. Mr. Hill, do you have a, any, any, anything under board correspondence, upcoming events, and information on future agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For board correspondence, your board received correspondence from Paul Yoder and Karen Lang of Shaw, Yoder, Auntie Schmelzer, and Lang, dated October 17th regarding the CMSP Governing Board County Supervisor Position for Group Two Counties. Your board received correspondence from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration regarding services offered by that organization. Your board also received correspondence from the California Department of Toxic Substances Control regarding a community survey about their facility. Your board also received notification regarding the California Forest Stewardship Program. And I also wanted to announce that administration receives correspondence from the Department of Water Resources approving our request for an exemption for a single-year limit on transfers or exchanges of Article 56 carryover water supply for the Kettleman City Water Purchase from Mojave, which your board approved on October 11th. That was good news to know that they're gonna let us do that. For upcoming events, The Rock the Purple Luncheon will be held at First Baptist Hanford on October 27th, from 12:00 to 1:30. Speakers will include a surveyor of, excuse me, a survivor of domestic violence. Therapists will briefly discuss self-care for both survivors and service providers. This is a free event that is hosted by Kings County District Attorney Victim Witness. The Kings County EDC and JTO Annual Dinner will take place Thursday, October 27th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The event will have a Kentucky Derby theme, and take place at the fairgrounds in Hanford. The City of Avenel will be hosting a trunk-or-treat, which will take place on October 28th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Vets Hall parking lot in Avenel. There'll also be a Halloween dance. The Kings County Animal Services will be hosting a Halloween Spooktacular on October 29th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at 10909 Bonneville Lane in Hanford. This is a free family event with food vendors, booth, and much more. The animal shelter will be providing free microchips, and personalized pet tags will also be available for $5. Dogs are welcome, but must be on a leash. The Kings County Board of Realtors will be hosting its annual golf tournament on November 7th at the Kings County Country Club in Hanford, with proceeds benefiting Kings County Sheriff's K-9 Unit. It'll be a shotgun start at 10:00 a.m., four-man scramble is the format. Registration is $1,000 per team. The Fifth Annual Santa Rosa Rantry Charity Golf Tournament in support of SRR Youth Services will take place on Monday, November 14th, at the Lamore Golf Course. Again, it's a 10:00 a.m. shotgun start, and the format is a four-man scramble. Team registration is $2,000. Hanford Parks and Recreation is hosting the Holiday Banquet, or, excuse me, Botique at the Hanford Civic Auditorium, November 19th and 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There'll be handmade crafts and commercial vendors. For upcoming agenda items, administration has consideration for approval with agreement with CoFile Technologies Incorporated for archival book project. The Assessor Clerk Recorder has consideration for approval of a joint exercise of powers agreement of the California County Assessors Information Technology Authority. Behavioral Health considerations, excuse me, has considerations regarding approval of an agreement with the iHeart Media Incorporated for Media Marketing Services, and Human Resources will be presenting the County Services Award. That concludes that report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seen none. Thank you very much. We will now move to the board. We'll move into a closed session to take up a single item, Waggles versus County of Kings, with any reporting announced to take place on November 1st, which will be our next regular scheduled meeting at 9:00 a.m. So with that, thank you very much, everyone. Wear the green. Thank you very much.